Did some workouts, you know. Muscled up.
It certainly fits.
It is wonderful to see you.
Likewise. It's been so long.
It has.
Good evening, Mr. Nemesis.
Hi! You look amazing today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really excitable day, you're... You're okay?
I'm just happy to be here.
I'm happy you're here.
Always a good getter. Isn't that right, Lono?
Absolutely! You know me so well, Mr. Sachi.
Mm-hmm. Right now we're waiting for Aki, but like I said, he might be having some issues getting here, so we'll wait a bit for him.
I was on everyone's weekends.
Busy.
So far, so good.
Enjoy my vacation to the utmost.
Can't even about vacations as of recent. Maybe I should start thinking about taking one of mine out.
You should! Vacations are wonderful.
Did you ever get there in Cuba? Jamaica? Oh, I wanted. We never did that trip.
No, we haven't. At least, I haven't.
Very important to keep the mind healthy and stable, Ludric. I recommend it, if you can spare the time.
Unfortunately, I can never spare the time. My mind is such a force into existence.
Nothing wrong with that. Sometimes, a little push. You could stop by my district. We have a wonderful severance program for the mind. It would give you the most wonderful vacation.
Take note of that.
Hmm, I look forward to your visit. I would love to do it myself.
Hamsky climbed a mountain, not... Hey, Kaimon, thanks for the sub. I love you. Hamsky climbed a mountain, not climbed a Saturn. It was just a weird mountain.
All your worries, your stress... Lifts off of you when you enter heaven. If only for a time. Stress always returns.
Also, the entire meat rack got attacked while he was on vacation up a mountain.
No, but somebody has made their way into the building. As far as I can sense, they're not here yet. Guess they're taking their time.
Saturn's a gas giant, right?
Yep.
That's it.
I could give you a question. You don't want me asking?
I climbed a mountain and Saturn was at the top, but it was solid.
Oh?
Guess it wasn't really Saturn.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but it was Saturn then.
I'm well aware.
I wasn't aware that you went hiking. Did you have a good trip?
I didn't fall down the mountain once, so no.
Alright then. I'm not too sure what's taking Aki and his associate so long, but... They can join in while we discuss.
They're here.
As if... Wow. Very well, I'll give them a moment. And here they are.
Fifteen minutes later.
How unprofessional!
And next cue.
You know what they say, sometimes it's nice to make a fashionably leaving trince.
There's a difference between fashionable leaving, just like... Apologies for a second, nerves.
It's fine. Right then. Shall we get started with the meeting? Some news have been brought up. Still stand once you are ready.
Stand. Ah! Great.
Alright then. Okay. Once you sit, the meeting will start. Who would like to start before we, uh, sit down? Very well, I'll take the go-ahead then. Bring up news on my front. And then we'll go down. Sit down. Very well. Information I have brought that... From the last time we've dealt with these... Robots called Purge. There's a subfaction known called Null. Those who know who they are... Uh... You already know the details, but who doesn't? Doesn't? Basically, they're robots that are bent on, well, killing people, turning them into more robots, and stuff like that. They have been propping up and, as well as, attacked my casino. So I would say is be careful in your own districts, because if they dare to attack mine, even with all the lilacs running around, they might even do to yours. Information will be passed out of what they're capable of, what kind of armaments they have, and any possible weaknesses. Malius, since you're now back in the seat... Do you have anything you wanna start on your end? And we'll move down.
Hmm... Hello, everyone. I'm back. I know you missed me. I may look a bit different. Necessary surgery. But this... Body is much more capable now. I am doing swimmingly and recovering well. I have a... Proposition for the council later. It will be quite the monologue, though, so I will wait. For now, that is all I have.
Go then.
The new network being established has undergone necessary testing and has begun the first stages of launching it to the public. Already received an influx of applicants that will be early coming through. In regards to the... Internal Affairs investigation... I've done a round of formal questioning of... Mr. O'Dar and... Schedule the autopsy to you. In your possession. Mr. McKay, in your absence, I'll talk you to... Mr. Keon and Evangeline. We asked if it was possible for a comparison to a live specimen. If that is all right.
Completely fine, will you?
Not much else to you, I know.
Very well, Nemesis.
Many things have occurred over the past couple of weeks. But I'm pretty sure... Hamsky can inform you of those if he would like to.
We have everything under control at the meat rack besides giant bounty hunters that are currently... Seemingly not under people's control. Maelstrom came into the meat rack, followed by Adam Smasher and another, probably cyber psycho, and caused issues and many injuries. When Maelstrom is easily something we can handle. That's about it, on my end.
We'll address that in the matter. Anything else?
Updates on the vigilantes?
No updates at this time.
Nothing more from my side.
Very well, Aki.
Ah, um... There's like, no easy way to really go about this, but... District Zero is currently without councilmen. My father died two weeks ago. Sickness. Natural causes.
So, I'm pretty sure maybe if you have his will, that we can see, if anything, cuz that would most likely instate that you might be in this seat now.
It does state that on the will, yes.
How did he die?
I'm not really sure. I was just told natural causes. Hasn't been able to see him yet.
Natural causes? I'm so sorry, my boy. You have my sympathy.
I'm gonna cut you like a fish!
I can text if you wanna send them all the... Stuff. For your thing. But she's going to send you, um, a thing.
Hmm, just put it on there. And this is the will?
Mm-hmm, in its entirety.
Well, as seen, and as we... Follow suit via contracts or wills, as, uh, when something happened to me, Athena fit my seat. So, to then, Aki sits in his seat. Does anyone object?
No. No.
Welcome to the fold, Aki.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that you wanna bring up that we can discuss over?
Um... No, I believe basic deals with the water district is going to continue with helping with ventilation. Um... And some other things. That's really about it. Nothing that needs to be discussed in the meeting.
Very well. And we'll go back towards me. As I said before, Null, this group of synthetics... Going around, most likely, picking up people who are desperate, in need of some, uh, of help. And using that ploy to bolster their numbers. Ion, you have files on them, correct?
Yes, I do.
If anyone wants any information, please hand it over to his eye on. He might, if you can, handle, hand out those information for, from Null, at least.
Understood.
This incident reminds me of Purge. Is it connected?
Yes. As I said before, they're a small leftover group.
Oh... I see.
They call themselves Martyrs for the cause.
The main thing is, they used to be just remnants, but it seems that they have more... Assets than they should.
You think there's a supplier, then?
Either that, or they found an older facility.
It would do us safe to check on all the old destroyed facilities. See if one hasn't escaped our knows.
Exactly.
There's only one problem with them, though. Even after all this time, we still haven't found all of them.
Ah... Better, unfortunately. Is it possible to capture one of these Null units and trace it back to its origin?
We've tried that, but it seems they had a kill switch last time when we upperhanded him a long, a long while ago. We, if we find the facilities...
Then what should you do?
I know it's out of jurisdiction of leaving the city too much, cuz we might get into different political views of the places, so we might have to employ a third party to at least investigate.
So if we do end up finding any from either our sides of information or locations, we shall be bringing it to the council directly. So we're all informed and are aware of the issue?
Yes.
Good.
Right then. Malius? Uh, do you have anything you wanna talk about? Uh, all the points that were brought up here? Or even something that you even brought up with your miraculous return?
With such problems and the unfortunate passing of your father, Aki... My... Monologue would be unfit for this moment, as it would just add on to the pile. However, if you all wish to hear it, I won't shy away. But it can always be saved for later... Or another meeting.
It's up to you, Aki.
It's fine.
We are slowly being stifled, brothers and sisters of Zephira. Stifled by the One Above, and even more so lately. We're all one big city. Yes, but we're so segmented, broken apart, like a child's toy. Do you not agree with me?
I agree.
Do you wish to be stepped upon by Upper Zephira, by our sibling? No, I thought so. Because sooner or later, they will come for us. They think we are theirs, their belongings. But they do not see the importance of us. We are their pillars. Without us, they are nothing. But we are broken. And if they arrive with us in such a state, well, we will fall easily. So I propose... A new legislative of sorts for Zephira. One of... Value. And dare I say... Capitalism. Place a foot on the table. A copy for each of you. It benefits us all. I guarantee it. Take the week or month or two... Read it. And decide. Tell me your thoughts and any changes you would like. But I think it would benefit us all as one.
Thank you. Hmm.
I mean to bind us all together, as a family, as one city. Separate from them. As it always should have been.
That's why we meet the council. So that way...
Indeed. To our left, sir.
Thank you. That's what the council stands for. Stand united. Even though we're from different places. How we handle our districts differently. We come here to talk to one another, get over our grievances, or even make compensations. Or compromise.
That's all from me. Please, read it, while you have free time.
Very well. You go there?
I find our relationship with our... Neighbor... Uh... I do not view them as... Above us, even though they are physically. However, the... Approach of this... CMF has made me... Wary. I recently encountered a CMF individual and gave them my contact information. I would believe myself to be the easiest for them to approach out of our... Group that irritated me having a... Our military backfield. And the rest of us present here. I'll clean my discussions with them. And this proposal, we can have something fruitful.
We'll have to see.
I did have a question.
Yes?
Malius, I was curious why one of my officers is on your side of the table and why they have not shown up for work for some time.
Ah, Lono. Us had a bit of a vacation recently. Out to dinner for a day or two. She came to visit me while I was... In the hospital. And, well, one thing led to another, and... We, uh... Had a fun time. Excuse me, I will compensate for her off-days of work, if need be. Lono has been working herself to death. And I do say she needs a bit of... Vacation.
Something we can work out personally, then. No need to worry about it now.
You also didn't invite me, silly. I haven't been allowed to accompany you in the last several weeks. It's not news.
He's been under a lot of stress. As I said before, he had nerves.
It was actually because you told me I couldn't come.
There are reasons.
So maybe we should ask you that question?
Lono?
Yes?
Is it safe to assume it was possibly the late council member that gave that order?
Everything I had done up until this point was in his best interest. As keeping District Zero together, as I have been in the absence of a councilman. I thought it'd be best for Aki to also prepare himself for such a big role.
Hmm, was that science by you, Miss Lono?
Understandable.
Anything else besides before we go to Nemesis? No? Very well, it's your fault, Nemesis.
You was on his side. CMF's activities have been... More and more frequent. Especially for the fact that they have taken an entire station for themselves and, obviously, have liquidated a lot of other assets. I have gotten some information that's, um... Previous. employments... of individuals of our districts have been talking to them personally, assisting them.
Hmm.
Having private locations of sorts of waterfront, as well as... the garden.
Hmm.
From what they have planned, I do not know. But I do know that they are planning for an attack. Where? I don't know yet. But I do know they're ready for an assault, and it's not the waterfront.
Hmm.
Unless I jinx myself here and now.
These are quite the allegations. Nemi, how do you know they're going to attack? This early, at least?
I've got ears in many places, Malus, just as much as you do.
An attack this early?
I've heard whispers as well, on the streets of Sumur. I've heard it recently, yes. Dear Mungari, I was hoping my meetings would... all that.
Oh, my fears are even worse than I realized. If true, of course.
If anything, like I said, with no scrappers and other groups that have caused discord and chaos within our own city, might as well as paint a target on everyone's back forward to the EMF.
Outside of that... the only other thing I have to bring up is water filtration, something simple. My... organization has finished in preparations of full filtration. For toxic water that had been given down to us, as well as the stuff that we have now. If any other preparations... would like to be made to clear water in your other areas that are more toxic, I am more than willing to give a hand.
Hmm. I know me and Malus most likely are usually on top of that kind of situation for our own districts, but if any of you are lacking in such facilities, Nemesis has offered his hand. Anything else, Nemesis?
I'd like to congratulate you, Nemi. I'm sure you've made Hamsky's day and his people. However, it seems there are still acts of violence happening in the meat rack. I experienced it firsthand. What are you doing about that? Are you just going to leave?
This being dealt with.
Hmm.
Don't worry your face. It's going to be dealt with. That is all from my side.
Gildea, I wanted to ask how the investigation was going.
We are making progress. Finished a first round of formal questioning with Mr. O'Dar. We have indeed got contact with the Omithian team, as well as... analysis of a living specimen for comparison.
I wanted to inform all of you if it was not already made clear that Mr. O'Dar stepped down from the Whisperers and has recently left. Someone by the name of Sean Odelli is now in charge of the Whisperers.
Odelli?
Yes. Family member.
Now, this is child.
Not a child, no. Um, is... I don't know what he is. I didn't really look into it, but he isn't a child.
Hmm. Very well. Well, if anyone has anything to bring up, any grievances, anything they want to make clear, might as well bring it out now before we adjourn this meeting, as it was very quick. Not too much.
I have a lot of grievance or concern.
Hmm. Hmm.
Smasher was operating within the meat rack, and so either was a casualty. Not sure if the person was deemed a target or not for Smasher. However, I checked he was dealing with the scrapper problem, and there were no scrappers within the area.
Hmm. I believe he was sent down after Maelstrom, and from the reports, it seemed that Maelstrom led Mr. Adam to the meat rack.
The original location that he was sent to was on the outskirts. They trailed Adam towards, obviously, the center point. Am I correct, Adam?
You are. It's one thing we may need to take note of placing aids. It's not sure it's him.
And the individual from the casualty, if our report went ahead, was classified as cyber psychosis at that point.
Can anyone confirm nor deny?
I can kind of...
He was on medical leave.
He snapped at us when I called him Trinidad, uh, a couple of weeks ago, like it wasn't him, and then we had to try and chase him out. I tried to block him out of the teleporter. He came in through the corpore elevator. Uh, he seemed to have cleared up in the middle. I don't know what happened, but I assume cyber psychosis or something worse. Also, we do not need someone like Adam Smasher busting through... the meat rack. We can handle things ourselves. Maelstrom are nothing.
Handle things yourselves?
I guess you would inform Nemesis.
After being riddled with bullets in your streets, I find that hard to believe, Hamsky.
I did ask you to not come...
Every week, I am aware of your community being attacked. Perhaps you're a breeding ground for these nefarious things.
I, at the beginning of this...
Cyber psychosis? These gangs?
Malus, may I remind you, you did not inform me of your arrival, nor Hamsky. Therefore, you put yourself at your own risk. When it was already stated through multiple meetings that we were dealing with problems. Like the EMF.
I'll admit, I'll admit, it passed through my mind, but I wanted to experience...
Go ahead, Gildea.
How often do you go to the meat rack?
Quite often, I would say, at least once a week.
How about you, Erelan?
Not very often, but I'm visiting more now that I have free time.
How often do you review from your time spinner, how often has there been acts of violence?
Often as of recent.
Fairly often, that's why I choose not to go. I don't feel safe attending. How about before the incident, if I may ask?
If you do not come to the meat rack, how do you know it's often?
Are you asking me personally?
I would like...
Yes.
One at a time, please.
I know because I have friends. I'm close friends with Rodrick, and then, of course, my father, close friends with Ludric. I have allies, and allies tell stories, Mr. Hamsky. So I'm well aware of what happens in the meat rack, even though I'm not there.
If I've learned anything about going away from the city for a little while, word spreads quickly and it's always wrong. Keep your mouth shut.
Just because I'm not at the meat rack does not mean I'm in the city, Mr. Hamsky.
I will say, after the events of what happened to Malus, I did visit the meat rack recently, and their security was very much on top of things. Even just a suspicion of somebody following me, they quickly swept me aside and... swept the perimeter and made sure I was safe. They have made changes, I've seen it.
We...
If I may ask, thank you. If I may ask, how often were fights breaking out before the incident with Malus?
On occasion, they would break out because people are struggling down there and frustrated for the same reasons I asked for fresh food and water. And financial issues.
Then that brings my next question. That brings my next question. Was this fight an outbreak foreseeable then?
With Malus?
It sounds like to me that it wasn't.
Smasher?
Just in general, uh, in general, before the Malus incident. I don't believe there was any way to foresee the Whisperers or anybody in that matter to come in and attack, even if he was or had informed. Not saying that he shouldn't have informed, but rather that, you know, it, for me, it doesn't really add up, is what I'm trying to say.
If anyone lives down there and they understand what it takes to survive, they are aware that on occasion, something will happen. Unfortunately, we are not... safe like at the casino. We have to deal with financial issues and hunger. And we are trying to make it safer, and it has been way safer up until coming here.
Understood. That is all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Aki.
Hmm.
Did you inform me and Hamsky that you were arriving upon that day? Understood. That makes it very clear that... Because I hate surprises.
As your HR, I do have to inform you, it is for safety reasons, Malus.
If I may, it is also human nature. You see somebody in power compared to the poverty and the lives that they lead, it leads to anger and frustration, which they tend to act upon. So a man in higher power going to the poorest district or poorest area can lead to some issues, whether you want them or not.
She is correct.
I would also like to point out that within the first week of Mr. Gildea's... induction to becoming a council member, open hostility and threats and physical acts towards him started within like 24 hours. So it is safe, it is his safety is quite right.
Ludric?
Me.
What acts have they been so far?
Towards Gildea and the meat rack?
Yes, towards Gildea.
I can listen if you'd like. It's not just insults. I have people who are threatening to assassinate me within 24 hours of me becoming a councilman. I received anonymous messaging in the search, which, it is unsurprising, of course. However, before becoming a councilman, although they could say I became a regular at the meat rack, before the title and after title, there was a... noticeable shift in treatment to the point that I had led to. Yes, cover my ass as PR sake, make sure people wouldn't... open fire upon me in streets. I want those streets people with cool weapons.
Now... I have to say this because, obviously, in the corporate area of the meat rack, it would have seen me coming in, as well as, well, in my case, and stuff like that of it being dangerous. I didn't even step into the full area of the meat rack, but there was apparently a drive-by. I was, just showed up.
I was actually there.
They didn't attack, they didn't, they didn't attack me, but it looks like, like I said, regardless if anyone's there, councilman or not, it seems to be quite, well, dangerous regardless.
As Erelan said, low-poverty areas with high and mighty don't go well.
I didn't see any high and mighty there.
Hmm.
We are dealing with them.
We have three council members who don't feel quite safe in your district, Nemi. Aki is the only one who has faith in the meat rack.
I didn't say that.
He did not say that, Malus.
As I say, I can see the dangers. There's always danger, no matter where you're going, even if it's not even the city itself. But I'm not gonna go around if I get shot in, well, the meat rack. I'm not gonna complain to Nemesis. It's my own fault for being there.
I think we have a lot to thank Mr. Hamsky for. Considering he's even here at our meetings means something. District Zero is known for some of the worst crime here in Zephira. I can't have every person that runs a community in District Zero sitting by my chair. Nemesis is lucky to even have one. I think we should give him a benefit of the doubt. His home is not the only place that is affected.
Agreed.
Well said.
I do agree on that.
I do not mean to argue with you all on it. I merely wanted Hamsky's opinion. The meat rack can look after itself. You have faith?
Yes. I do.
All right then, anything else that needs to be brought up? No? Only once? Going twice? Very well. Please stand so we can adjourn this meeting. It went pretty smoothly. Thank you all for coming. Hopefully we can meet up sometime soon with promising information about what we are dealing with now. Very well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mama.
What do you do like to follow me?
I enjoy that.
I do too, actually.
Sorry, my blood started boiling.
You gotta get that temper under control, Lamsky.
It's not temper, I need to fucking speak up when people are blabbering when they aren't even there.
I don't care what they have to say. I get what you have to say of the meat rack because you are actually there. Constantly. And if that makes it very clear to you, I take your word of the meat rack over all of theirs first. Because we have gained respect and trust. If I was upset at all with you speaking loudly and back, I would have told you myself to shut up.
Just so you're aware, I already have a lead on the people that shot up our food truck, which is our business and we'll deal with it.
But I'm dealing with it.
Oh, fucking great.
Got him!
Nemesis. Orion. I like one of these gnaw packers.
Understood. Sending out connection for data transfer. Sending packet now.
Received.
Learning to have some fun.
It was. Goodbye.
Did he say it was? Like as in, the meat rack?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. He's already been killing them, he's already been dealing with a bunch of shit. And yes, he had his fun. Anyone who can give him a challenge, even if it's a slight amount, is fun to him.
I don't want it at the fucking meat rack. He put a lot of people in danger.
If you want me to show you the map exactly where I told him to go, you can see for yourself that he tracked all the way there. His contract was specifically to take out Maelstrom. That was it.
At the end of the day, it doesn't matter. We've already gone past that point, what you do going forward is dictates what happens next. So if you don't want Smasher there at the meat rack, then you blacklist him. You make sure that he's not able to use the teleporter, you make sure he's not able to get down through the corporate elevators. And you gotta think faster, because if this happens again...
I just recently got access to-
Happens again.
I would have probably stopped most of it if I was fast enough.
Just to know, if ZMF get their hands on that, and they know that you have that.
Fuck VR chat, man. God damn it. Also, Hamsky was about to say something about ZMF. Wait, recover.
How many people have you told you have access?
Shit. Alright, everyone had a big old flux. But where were we?
How many people have you told you have access to that elevator?
No one, and first of all...
Keep it that way.
Wait, say what?
Good, keep it that way.
I don't think the ZMF cares about the meat rack. Or anybody down there, or any of the small crimes that are going on. I think they are looking somewhere else.
Hamsky, they chose the fucking waterfront for a reason.
Have they done anything to, besides dissolve the ZPD?
They have been moving themselves around. Gaining, spreading out for more information. They are planning to do something.
Maybe they chose the waterfront because you're the least corrupt.
Probably. But my hands are still dirty nonetheless. Like everyone else.
But I guess you better fix the pollution in the water and clean it up. It's already clean.
Water is being solved.
For the meat rack, that is.
The rest is being solved very soon. Thankfully, the UT have been quite helpful.
Uh, one of them came out of that mega building in the middle of the meat rack. Uh, it was a little hostile, I lopped its head off.
Oh. Please, I'm only all his soul.
No. I, there was a few-
Okay.
They came up out of the sewers, they chopped it in half.
Sorry, could you do that sound one more time so that I can have- Jennifer, did you get that?
Who the fuck is Jennifer?
Got it.
Junifo.
Don't worry about that. Is...
Hmm.
Don't worry about that. What's important is that at least you've got a plan. Uh, your water is being cleaned. Uh, you know that I'm working uh, with other people to go ahead and get that air filtration system going, uh, as far as the coolant coming down. Um, we just need a place to work. If you're okay with us working in the garage, I'll come by every week, we'll go ahead and we'll get started.
My team kind of has a few plans too. And Aki wants to help. I, if he's not working with the Whispers, I do think Aki, if he's not being controlled by someone else, is decent.
I've allowed him to go the go-ahead as long as you've given him a good green light. If that helps.
Fucking weird shit. I have a plan-
That was Diana.
For self-sufficiency. We need some kind of generator with the water.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have to run through District Zero. Wherever the bank, power banks are in District Zero. Also, the air filtration can go through... I've completely forgotten everything. We could just recycle the air.
There's a way to fix the problem.
Well, I don't want to funnel it somewhere else. I think we can reuse it, maybe. Also, I'm hoping that mega building in the middle, we can turn into a greenhouse for temporary fresh air while we wait for the solution to be finished.
Hmm.
I got a bad feeling.
What do you mean?
What, about Di- Diana?
No, I think somebody was watching us.
Given that, neither people allowed in here with people who were allowed. It's a short list.
Interesting of note. Anyways. If you want my help, it's there.
Point being-
You don't need my help, then, yeah.
Hmm.
I think everyone working together would be good. And it could be not just the meat rack. It'll all work together for something else. Also, can I see that fucking thing he handed out?
You want to give him a digital copy?
I can.
You have your phone on your own.
Give me the digital one.
He'll give you a digital copy.
Connection.
Okay, go, go for it.
Initializing data transfer.
Jesus Christ, you're a fucking nerd, man. Alright.
Transfer complete.
Thank you. Also, why was everyone targeting the meat rack today?
When any of these council members have something to target, they love to. It's very simple. It's what they do.
They didn't even look at him.
Hmm. Hmm.
I'm telling you here, but I don't think here's the place to talk about that.
No, we can move somewhere else in a sec.
Sachi?
Sorry. Just double checking- To, um, s- satisfy his paranoia. Is anyone else allowed in here apart from the ones that we've invited?
Only, only, only people that we invited, I invited Holly. If, if you're worried about that.
No. Um, shake it for now.
I invited her, she was interested. Especially since she does a simple gift as well. She's a business owner and as well as, well, a charity function. Well, like I said, she's in the audience. Right? The reason why you guys were up there is because you're representing Nemesis.
I can bring in the audience.
Well, they have to make sure to keep their mouth shut.
Actually, this room's a little too-
They have to, otherwise I have to correct them.
No, Smasher would.
That is true.
Whoever you bring in here, you have to make sure that they understand how to basically navigate the rules.
I'm, I'm-
And they would be invited by Mr. Nemesis.
I don't like many people who stand up and talk apart from you.
There's a lot of people at that table that are just a little too ominous, and I don't think the public should see that.
So what's the public eyes of those who can actually do a little something with whatever credits they have, unfortunately? Feelings and emotions.
Sachi. I have a bit of a question for you. Little side off from this. What do you know the ZMF doing right now?
Apparently you know more than me, but I don't know. Like, I've, I know that they've been putting checkpoints in the waterfront and as well as the industrial. But other than that, I can probably-
I know some took a little walk about in your district.
That's about it.
Yes, they came in to talk to me, but like I said, I've given the basic details of how I operate my district. They were asking questions about that.
They haven't come and spoken to me yet, which is surprising.
Probably just too chaotic in seeing what you're-
Most likely.
-of at least. I think they're approaching people who have more so of, well, less craziness, though I would say that um, but from last weekend, getting shot up by Null.
If they return.
They have. They already returned. They always been around. It's just that no one out, like, not a lot of people were looking for them or doing a thing about them. I gave Hamsky a warning.
Full blown.
Regardless, they have assets. Old purge units, they probably modified.
Hmm.
I've told Hamsky this, especially since it's a meat rack, but now since you're here, I've already said that to everyone over there. Make sure this shit's locked down. Because it's not just a casualty, it's what it's gonna look like to a ZMF.
Got it.
Actually. Right, uh, going forward, Hamsky, make sure your arrogant has proper cameras, footage, security cameras in places, so that way you have accountability for what happens.
I have some security cameras now, but people want privacy, so I have them in places where we can get tidbits.
Just the pu- just the public streets. Just put in the public streets. You can't have privacy in a public fucking street.
The streets are less-
I'm saying, yes.
It's harder to handle the streets, someone's just gonna damage the camera.
Then I'll do something about it. Just had to ask.
No, people don't need to suffer more just because you graffiti the camera or something.
Look, I'll-
I don't know, there's more talking about if you-
I'll see what I can do to help if you want it.
His tech is good, reliable.
I'll let you guys handle it.
Nemesis' shoes in the asphalt, so, you know.
Yeah, you called me out, or you called the meat rack out on that shooting, I'm already on it.
I, I had to, right? Like I said, the corporate has cameras, right? If Malius went to go check or anything like that, right, then I'm just most likely gonna see that I haven't said anything. Do I like it? No, I don't. But I have to do things in a way where making sure that it's covered. Alright, like I said, I don't, I'd, I don't think, you know, the Malius can't protect themselves. I don't think that. You guys can. Shit happens, right? Even as you said, the casino's well-guarded. We were attacked by a fucking army of robots. It can happen anywhere.
Anyway.
And the whole shit with fucking Nemesis blowing up to portion, like I said. If I get shot in fucking waterfront, right, at meat rack, right, I'm not gonna go to you. I'm not gonna go to you. Because I was there. I put myself in that situation.
Something I wanted to say in there was you've been there over and over again and you've never been shot, so people that get shot must have a, something else to think about.
It's also the fact that everyone knows that he's been to each one of these fucking wars personally.
True.
No one wants to deal with someone who's been on every single fucking war.
At this point, it comes down to-
Some people think I'm evil, some people think I'm a fucking-
Hey, listen.
You say that now, right? I'm in, I'm in, I'm in-
You, stop, stop right now!
No, no, no.
You fucking put that pocket back! You put that pocket back! You put that fucking foot back there!
No, 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 no. No, no, I've been eating healthy, alright? I brought, I brought almonds. I brought, ah, I brought-
Why did you bring that in?
I brought-
Clean that the fuck up!
Listen, I brought-
Right now!
That's what I fucking thought. Man, that's unfortunate. Um, anyways-
We keep this fucking place clean.
The point being, is that those who do their research, those who do their homework, those who do their donations and the expectations of whatever environment or whatever district they walk into, if-
the expectations of whatever environment or whatever district they walk into, if they don't, that is on their own fault at this point.
Put it in your jacket. I don't want to see you dropping off way upstairs.
They know well enough. So it can only be assumed that if they go into an area and they make some type of claim or accusation that something is off, they knew that this was going to happen.
Though, I would say there was a Kodak Mount moment in that, in that whole, uh, um, car fucking drive-by, with someone getting fucking rear-ended.
Oh, I heard about that, and I don't think...
Actually, actually, I was, no, I actually got given, um, details on that. Apparently it was a small blind child.
So, yeah, let's not talk about this.
Yes.
I've already talked to them, it's... I'm dealing with it.
Only got informed about it, the number that happened.
I found...
To be honest.
I think I know the car that drove through, I saw it on the cameras, so I'm going to find them, I know where it could have been. I've seen it before.
Okay, but let's be real here, is the child okay?
They're in a hospital, I think, but they sounded like they were okay. Also, a child is standing in the street at Rock Bottom. Kinda stupid.
They have parental figures there?
They had an uncle or something, alright, it's fine.
They, you have to stop laughing right now. You have to stop laughing right now.
I'm crying, I'm crying, oh, the poor blind child, oh. It's devastating.
You're laughing about a blind child, I'm gonna get rear-ended.
Hold on, so you're literally telling me this is the reincarnation of the, what is it, what is that, the one movie, the Christmas movie where the little blind girl comes up and he's like, hey, is there a guy that I have some... Like, what is happening? I, look, I don't...
Talking about, um, uh, blind child getting rear-ended at the meat rack during the drive-by.
Stop! Stop! You can't say things like this!
This is the blind girl that fucks with people non-stop and then uses blind as an excuse to get away with it.
I know, man, I was climbing a mountain for like nine hours.
Wait, why were you climbing a mountain?
Do they have a gray sweater?
Why were you climbing a mountain for nine hours?
Uh, I was trying to deal with a previous issue, which Geldier is well aware of, two individuals that were steffing around, threatening me, held a gun to my head, and then I went to do a business deal on top of a mountain, which took nine hours to get to the top.
Did you win?
No, I got called halfway up, twenty thousand meters up. And everyone was saying the meat rack was under attack, and all I could do was jump off and die. I didn't win.
I see you're very much alive. Yeah, I was gonna say, it was the biggest failure of a death I've ever seen if you were talking around me, dying right now.
I went up hoping there was a vehicle of some sort at the summit.
Fair enough.
Can you remember? I had this discussion with you about focus might be upon you.
Long time no see.
Long time no see, dinner was fun.
And we had a discussion about focus might be upon you.
Watching people over like four different sides.
I redirected it onto myself.
It was a, it was a...
No, it was a group thing, it wa- it was a group thing.
My blood started going down.
What were you assuming?
Sorry.
What were you assuming?
You are finally understand.
I always assume...
It's a barb.
I'm introducing this to the K R, deals, networking, among others.
Sorry, what you think, what you think?
Yeah, share with class.
To make sure things are...
Well.
Not problematic for you and your people.
Also, I need to make sure the deals I've made with you actually...
Yeah, you know what, and we're gonna do it again next week.
Make sure people don't get...
We are? Okay, sure.
Would you like to move to a different location so we can talk about this more fluently?
Be careful with this one, he's a bard, I know he's a part of my organization, so you can watch out for shit.
Well, I only have one other person to talk to.
I mean, I'm not a bard, I'm playing music and I have a way with words, so I'm a pseudo bard.
How I get to choose the place?
Do you want to join the organization?
Yes, have fun with it.
Oh.
Gonna choose a freezer, let you suffer.
A freezer?
I can hear you still.
I'll die.
I know.
Although I did make a deal with Geldier, so, true, I did make a deal with Geldier though, so I do kinda need to sing in front of people. Bastard didn't die against the plague lord, so, you know, gotta do that now.
To Stumber.
Cool, you got a group of five people you really trust and you tell them how it is.
Yeah, basically.
Well, remember we do own the waterfront radio channel, so we are fully capable of playing recordings you might be making over the radio stations.
Oh, boy!
Hmm. Hamsky.
Sorry, I snapped.
It's okay.
I just don't like people that aren't at the meat rack all the time speaking for us.
I think enough.
Speaking for you, it was more of in my experiences of being there, I haven't felt the safest, but that is a me personally thing, that is nothing against you or your group or the area, it's just a me experience.
Situation, it became an issue. Most people down there understand.
And I would love to go to Meat Rack more, but unfortunately outside influences make it very difficult for me to attend, so I do go when I can, it's just unfortunately not very often that I can.
I almost said I was a drug user in the middle of that meeting, because that's the sort of shit that happens when people randomly talk about you.
Hi.
When I went away from the meat rack, when I was having a breakdown, I suddenly became a dragon racist, because the situation that I tried to kick someone out, where someone got shot in the head, it happened to involve a dragon.
Wait, but how did that... Oh.
Before we, before we go any further, I would like to point this out, so it is known and said. The meat rack isn't the problem, it is the outside forces leaking in to the meat rack. You do a wonderful job of getting your staff security to respond to situations, there's never, if it is just the staff and the normal patrons, it's not a problem, ever. It's when other people start invading the area trying to take it. It's not your fault, it's not your problem.
Look, I, I was nowhere near the tragedy that happened on Sunday, but I knew my team had it under control. For the, for the first time in a long time, I wasn't there and I knew they had it under control.
Unfortunately, on the statue, but...
I heard something about that, but that is not what I will be talking about here.
Has anybody talked Scaly, by the way?
I talked to him this morning.
Uh, did you say MIA, or did you say?
I asked if he'd heard about Trinidad, and he told me yes.
Okay, because in Trinidad's culture, when somebody passes, it's reported as MIA, so I want to make sure that people tell Scaly not MIA, but the truth.
I wanted to, but I sadly couldn't.
Scaly is, you know how he is.
Well, he's aware, so here is the weird situation with that.
These benches mean the giants?
He's at a...
Well, yeah, they're made for gormunder-sized individuals.
Big for gormunder.
Have you seen the people? Have you seen the people who are... The silly one, the shortest one is probably Aki.
Actually, I'm, I'm...
Oh, that's where their souls are. That's what I'm saying, he's still, I mean, he's still pretty tall, but he's still...
Felt conflicted because he's like the dead.
We can talk later with Hamsky about it, um, right now, I gotta go.
I could just go to a place and just immediately talk to them.
It's good seeing you too, I hope things are all...
When you could still go talk to the people and I told them it's a...
They're okay.
It's a weird situation, it's very delicate. What I've also told him too, that, uh...
We can only just try every step of it one day at a time.
And that if he needs to talk to anyone about it, he can always go talk to me anyways.
I hope.
Put their hand on your shoulder. Take care, Mr. Hamsky.
I haven't seen her in a while, but, you know. You and I came here around the same time, so... See ya. At the beginning, we kinda stuck together.
Makes things easier immediately.
Well, I'm gonna get out of here. I'll see what.
Well, look at that, I didn't think I would, but I did.
What'd you do?
I, uh, apparently I won a prize at Lion Fork. Interesting.
Oh, cool, congrats! What'd you get? What did, uh, we get?
Well, I am getting a photo on the wall.
Oh, that's pretty.
Alright, let's continue the conversation.
Something to be made about you copying Abby, but I don't know what it is.
Oh, yours right now, bye!
Little stinky babies. Little stinky babies.
Stinky baby.
Stinky!
Stinky! Stinky babies!